The special call working session, Bath County High School, April 22nd, 2024, 6:00 P. M. Discussion of tonight's agenda. The consent agenda, any discussion on the consent agenda? That's the March 25th, 2024 minutes, March financial statement, claims, superintendent expenditures, use of facilities, travel, review of monthly financial reports of all funds, pay bills through April 30th, 2024, Morehead State University MOA, pathways, MOU, K-9 resources, safe and drug-free service agreement, 2024-25 school year, vector solutions agreement, SACC in adult care food program for FY 24-25, 504 chairpersons presented for the 2024-25 school year, admissions and release committee as presented for the 24-25 school year, May 1st, 24, 2024 staffing allocations, accept audit bid with KGSGPSC for the 23-24 audit, review Kentucky Department of Education indirect cost report for school year 24-25, athletic directors and assistant athletic directors job descriptions, 2024 and 25 district technology plan, bidding for services for the 24-25 school year, retain BCHS LBD certified position for the 24-25 school year, Perry Weather Safety System, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, MOU.
Couple things, excuse me, couple things to note, just as you look through, just make sure you take use of facilities, there are several people that use, request those, I see no issues with them, and then travel out of state, there are one, two, three, four, there are five out-of-state travels, and so just as you're approving that is on the consent agenda later, make sure that you've had a chance to look those over. Those are all within what we should be doing, and so I approve of those and think, I think the board shall agree. The Morehead State MOA is just to provide dual credit courses, we do that each year. The pathways is to provide therapy services for our students, again, that's a renewal. The K-9 resources will come 20 times in a year at our discretion, and then sometimes at their discretion, so that's a renewal to have the K-9. The vector solutions, that's all the PD trainings, well, most of the PD trainings that we do for our, our district, saves us a lot of money by having them online, and the teachers can get online and staff and do that in the comfort of their home or their, in their room. So anything out of the, the chairperson and miss release committees, those are again, just approvals so that Ms. Witt can get her teams together, provide quality services for special education. If there's anything else on there that anyone would like me to discuss, I'd be glad to. As we talk about the job description, 7S, the approval of the AD and assistant job descriptions, asking to break those up into high school, middle school designations to better serve our students. And the Perry Weather system, Ms. McNabb has looked into that, a lot of districts are using it. What it is, is it provides, we have to currently have to go outside, like when it gets hot in the summer, you have to go out and you have to have certain things to determine what is the weather, is it too hot? Do they need to take their helmets off in football? Also, it'll detect lightning strikes, so a lot of schools are going to this, and it will help us in our buses, and I mean, in determining whether our buses can run because we have access to a local meteorologist on here, whether we need to cancel school, they give us up to date, so we're asking, looking at that. If you have any specific questions about it, I'm not sure if Ms. McNabb's here or not, but I can get you the answers to those if she's not. And then finally, really asking on that MOU for Big Brothers, Big Sisters, that's only giving about 10 kids to start with, five high schoolers and five to 10 high schoolers working, and then we'll build on that as years go along, just to bring in, let our high schoolers mentor some of our elementary students. So that's all the items on the consent agenda.
Item four, construction and building updates.
That microphone may be turned off, Mr. Rhodes, I'm not sure. Okay, you're good.
Yeah, just got a few photos, just give you a few snapshots of what's going on. On a high school, well, we'll let him give those out and just. You see some photos, one there at top left, that's your overhead doors, new overhead doors. I think we got three of the four installed, and then a couple pictures of the gym. Metal panels going up, there's, there, that's to be complete at the end of the week, I know that's been dragging out, it's long overdue, but they're supposed to be completed, everything demodulized at the end of the week. Welding shop, you'll see that on the middle right, that's welding shop exhaust and air system duct. You see the new windows, that's been, I think we've installed 13 to date and got them all in at phase three, and the brickwork, blockwork's complete, overhead, and no leaks. We've, we haven't identified any leaks since that work's been complete, so hopefully that's gonna work out real well. And then the last photo, that's the, the wood shop dust and HVAC duct system. On the, on the high school, we're approximately 55, based on what, what we turned in to date for payment, we're approximately 55% complete. Change orders to date, it's been about $106,000, okay, that's what you've approved, approximately $106,000. Now, we started, I think we started out about a $475,000 contingency, so you know, you still have about $370,000 on the high school project. And then on, on the layback, we're looking at approximately 73% complete, and actually change orders, we have a negative balance around $35,000, so you're doing very well there. You've, we started out with about $311,000 in contingency, and you're now, you know, approximately 3, 340, somewhere along in there in contingency. So between the two projects, you know, you got around $700,000 estimating, if my numbers are, are correct. So just giving you a little update there, we think the Technology Center, hopefully we'll have that ready by in the fall, you know, when you start school, if everything works out well, there's a lot of work to do this summer. As far as the canopy, you got a lot of technology, you got a technology piece that happens once the canopy comes down. Got a lot of site concrete out there, so a lot of things gotta happen this summer. As far as the, just at, at the high school, well, while I'm on the Technology Center, I don't see if there's anything, we're finishing the controls for the HVA system, pulling the wires for the welding booths, finishing the fire alarm, and then we've got another overhead door to install. Oh yeah, let me tell you about the switchgear, you know, last, last month, we had a lot of conversation about the switchgear. You know, the electrician, he thought he could take care of it, just pay him some money, he would turn it off and work on it and give a little check, you know, go through it, make sure everything's working, and which he did, and so turned it off and we got it back on, so you know, you're in good shape. So you know, it's up to you, but I don't think you need to spend that money that we, that we sort of gave you in a budget last month, but I, I think you're in good shape. Now, you probably need to do that, what, once, once a year or something, let them come in and sort of check it out, make sure everything's functioning properly. But yeah, that, that worked out great. And this summer there would be, you know, we got a couple windows installed, then we got all that work at, on the exterior. On the, on the high school, we're, we're close on finishing phase three, and we'll be ready to begin another phase. Phase eight will be a lot of work this summer in the cafeteria, HVAC replacement, we got exterior site work, we got the gym mezzanine. Again, I was trying to emphasize, we got a, we got a big schedule, we got to try to meet this summer. So we're trying to get geared up for that, and we're gonna, as far as phase three, we're gonna deep clean all the rooms, then turn over that, that phase three, turn over the classrooms, and then April 29th, that's the plan, we're gonna start phase four. And I think Ms. Brandonberg, I think she may have a classroom's ready or getting close, so it's all gonna work out pretty good, to my knowledge. And then we'll just start the demo, like we do on all these other phases, the ceilings, lights, and duct work, and then, then begin installing the new duct work. So that's a, it's a continuous operation, I'll certainly entertain any, any questions that you may have at this time, as far as the construction. I think schedule-wise, I, I think we're looking pretty good. I don't see any big, you know, red flags out there as far as delays on any kind of equipment or anything, and progress, we're, we're moving pretty good. Might even gained a little bit, you know, I told you, I think last month we were behind about a month on the high school, but you know, we were ahead of schedule at the Technology Centers, but I think we might have gained a little bit at the high school, so, thank you.
Hey David, are all the roofs, how far along are the roofs?
I'm, I'm sorry.
How far along are the roofs?
It's supposed to be through at the end of this week.
Okay, we've had some big rains lately, has there been any leaks or are we having any problems?
I think there was some encountered this last time. I, I, I think they've been repaired, and, but it's matter of staying, we did have some leaks.
Okay.
And again, he's supposed to be completed, contracts are supposed to be complete this week.
If I can just amend that, David's talking about mainly the gym roof being completed. That full top replacement of the roof is done, it's just the coping or the coping and scuppered-down spouts and the metal panel around the edges. The other roof scope technically includes two rooftop units being installed on the classroom wing, and I know they started to do the steel work on the roof, but there's not like a timetable for when those two units are actually ready to go and installed, and they've cut into the roof. So that's the only other roof scope to still be completed, is technically two units on the classroom side, but the majority of the re-roof is near the gym, and most of that's completed. Beyond that, I don't have anything additional to add because David did mention the switchgear. Maybe my only note to add is that it's still on my radar to get the storefront repriced for the front entry for a more minimal approach, so that it's not a bigger sticker value of replacing everything there, but more of like a, a patch and repair approach, so that's still on my radar, it's just, it's not on the agenda for tonight.
Have we fixed the roof over by that entrance yet?
I'm sorry?
Have we fixed that leak over in the, that we had just put up that had come through, has that one been fixed?
Is that near the, near the gym?
It's when you walk, the old front, the old entrance into the building.
I think Mr. Thompson had a crew in here to work on that, I, I think it's been fixed.
Okay, and then the concession stand area, has that leak been fixed?
That's, yes, that's the area they're working on, I mean, that's under this contract.
Okay.
So I assume that's gonna be, this is week, hopefully everything's sealed and corrected.
Okay.
Okay?
Good deal.
I know I sound like a broken record, because I, but I've, I've been on these guys, they're, they're committed to get finished this week, and the weather looks good, so.
I'm sure most of you all are aware, the age of the existing roofs that are not in the project right now, so mainly the classroom wings, those are at the point to where you should consider replacing them in the near future, because all, all we've done to that roof for this project is cut into it and reflash it for new penetrations for the new rooftop units, and then beyond that, reflash like one small segment that has stone coping right now. So if nothing gets addressed on the roof holistically, there is a potential that you will continue to get spots of leaks throughout the perimeter of that portion of the building, but that's only because as of its age, and likely because of the stone coping of the very top of the parapet kind of getting loose and letting water come in. So just a reminder that it is at a point where you might want to consider looking at when you want to replace those two, I say two, it's really like the very first part of the building, and then the, the second phase, that's closest to the Shennott Building, that is what I'm calling as like a second part, but those two segments are due for their roofs to be replaced.
One more question, the, the roof that Carla referred to over by what used to be the front entrance, was that roof replaced in this contract?
In this contract, no, the only parts I've replaced are, let's see, the spot between the cafeteria and the gym, so I'm gonna call that to be a lobby area, that lower roof was replaced, and then the greater taller gym volume roof was replaced, but nothing else was fully replaced beyond outside the cafeteria and the tall volume of the gym.
Can you give us any kind of idea how old that particular roof is?
How old it is?
Just a guess.
So I know if we're talking closer to the new auditorium side, minus the auditorium, excluding that, but if you're talking towards that end, that's approaching to be about 24 years old? I'm sorry, did my math's right? I think it was constructed in '06 when the media center expanded over. If my math is right, that's maybe 18 years, that's probably better. Versus the true first, the second part of the building, those, it's plus 30 years at that point, but.
Okay, thank you.
I think not.
Correct, so for the classroom wings, yes, it's over 30 years at that point, but as you get closer to the auditorium, you're in the 18-year ballpark for that expansion and, and additional classrooms and admin suite. To my knowledge though, that section hasn't leaked as, as consistently as the two classroom section that are the oldest part of the building.
Item five, discussion and possible action of the consideration approval of the special inspections invoice from Ellie Gregg to inspect structural steel framing.
So this one is similar to invoicing sent at the last meeting. This one's exclusive to the high school, and it's for the structural steel at the high school itself. The last invoice that you had for roughly the same amount of money was for structural steel at the Shennott Building specifically for new exhaust canopy hoods in the, in the welding shop, but that was last time, this time it's for steel work done at the high school.
I guess that's all we have for you guys.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six, discussion and possible action to, to create an additional district-wide SLP position.
An SLP stands for speech-language pathologist. Bath County currently employs two part-time contract, contracted speech pathologists to deliver faith to eligible students. Ms. Witt and I are asking that we just hire an additional SLP, and that would be more cost-effective than continuing to utilize the contract SLPs. If there's any questions, Ms. Witt, we're probably best able to answer those.
So we have two right now, we just want to hire one full-time, is that what we're saying?
Yes, it's cheaper to hire one full-time than the two contract. Correct, she's shaking her head.
Can the one person do as much work as the two? That's all.
Discussion and possible action to vote to maintain established board district boundaries.
In the 2020 census, it's a requirement for higher, like state legislature, commissions, and things like that, they have to reallocate and keep an equal percentage within their zones. When they did that, this board chose not to rezone, but in the drawing of the lines, we've had two board members who have had crossover. And so in talking to our county clerk, Mr. Coyle, if this board chooses to stay exactly the way we were, maintain our current boundaries, it's simply, we will vote to make a formal declaration, and then tomorrow I will take the minutes to Mr. Coyle with the letter stating the board wishes to maintain their current lines.
Item eight, discussion and possible action to approve grant writer student services liaison position and job description.
So at, at one point in the past, we'd had a certified grant writer. This grant writer would be a classified and will be fully funded through the grants that they bring in and other grants that we currently have. They'll be responsible for the grant administration throughout the district. They must be able to work both independent with self-direction. One of the issues that we have, we've done a very good job, Ms. Witt and others, Ms. Klein, and I think Ms. Wells are all the time getting grants, but along those grants, they all have along the line, there's check-ins where you have to submit. This person will be able to make sure that we stay up to date and relieve some of that workload from those ladies as well, and so assist with the project management to let development disseminate, disseminate the materials, maintain the time and effort logs and other things. So again, this is position that we're asking for, that'll be no cost out of the general fund, and should be able to, if, if with fidelity, bring up, bring more money into our district, allow us to offer more things for our students and staff.
Where will the funding come from for this person?
I have it written down, but it's, it's like 25% from the migrant, 10% from the title, you know, or they're, not put you on the spot there, do you know? I have it written down, if I can find it, I don't know if I brought it. But it's, it's gonna come out of title funding, migrant funding. We can take indirect cost off some of the grants that they get as well. Grants, you can take 3% to 10%, depending on, the grant tells you how much you can take off indirect costs, so we use those monies to fund the position.
So we can use part of that grant money that they get to fund their salary?
Yes.
Okay.
And so it's also incentivizing to make sure that they're doing the work they need to do, but whoever's hired for that job, I'm sure will, will work very diligently at it to make it successful.
Item nine, discussion and possible action to approve the FY 25 salary schedules.
At the start of the year, Ms. Combs and I, every year we look down to see how much money that we can move towards raises. The size of our district, the last two years, we've been able, the first year we did 2%, second year we hit between 2% and 3%, but we did a 2%, we did a classified overhaul where we pushed money down. That allowed starting new classified people over the course of the year to make 25,000, 50,000 more in that 20-year span than they would have, so that was very beneficial, so that's what the board opted for, we are grateful. And so this year, even though if you've listened to your, your legislators, they're gonna say, they put a lot of money in, and they did a lot for education, they put a lot of money into education, but that, most of that money was earmarked, and so the amount that they gave that we could actually use for raises, we felt comfortable, very comfortable doing 5%. So as we met with the board this week, we came up with three options to share. So there's a 5%, option one, 5% for everyone, that'll cost 600,000 out of the general fund. Option two is a 3% certified and a $1 an hour classified with step, that'll be approximately 500,000 out of the general fund. And then option three is a 2% certified and 1% classified, 375,000. Of course, that'll be for the board to decide. I would recommend, since we put the time in last year, to do the step down, that we do the 5% for all districts, and I say that because Montgomery County's reportedly doing four. If everybody else comes out of this, Clark County just did seven. So a 1% could be about $1,000 in teacher pay, so if we get outpaced over the next several years, then it could be possible Brown, Montgomery County, and others are paying 7,000 or 8,000 or 9,000, and it's gonna be hard to retain quality teachers when they can drive 15 minutes down the road and make five or six more thousand, so. Of course, it's the board's decision, but as superintendent, looking out for the district and the board, I think that's probably, that's my recommendation.
Well, we're excited to have the SEEK funding go up so that we can give a lot of the money back to the teachers, and we want to give it back to you guys as much as we can without hurting the, having to take, raise taxes, and we're, we feel good about what we're gonna do this year for you guys.
Any other comments? Motion to adjourn. Adjourned.
Motion to call this Board of Education Special Call Meeting, Bath County School District, to order at 7:01 PM. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Discussion and possible action on tonight's agenda.
It was Carl.
It was Carl. Item three, Pledge of Allegiance and Silent Devotion. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Let's take a few seconds of silent devotion, please. Thank you. Item four, Teacher Clarity Presentation.
Ms. Klein. If teachers here this evening are going to present on teacher clarity, I won't say a word about it because they're going to cover it in great detail for you. But I appreciate y'all coming this evening.
We're here to talk about teacher clarity, just like he said. And we're just going to give you a little rundown about what it means to us as teachers and in our district and how it is affecting and helping our students. Our overview is according to John Hattie, who was a well-known researcher in education, teacher clarity has been found to be one of the most important learning inventions. Teacher clarity is more than just simply putting student-friendly learning targets up on our boards just to say that they're there. They're actually there to help our students learn, engage their own progress in the classroom. So let's say one of our learning targets is I can learn to, or we're learning how to add with regrouping. As our students are able to do that, they can check that off or they can say, hey, yes, I can do that. So they can check their own progress as well as us as teachers checking their progress. And it gives them feedback instantly to see that they can do that.
Hello, I'm Ms. Thompson. I'm on the teacher clarity team here at the high school. And the reason that the program is a good idea is because several factors cause good veteran teachers to leave and you have new teachers come in. You have retirement, you have teacher turnover, you have option six teachers where you kind of start to teach first and then learn how to be a teacher later. And the teacher clarity makes it uniform across the district so that somebody new coming in has something to work from.
Hello, I'm Michelle Bradley, fourth grade teacher at Crossroads Elementary School. When we started this initiative back in 2022, 2023 school year, we partnered with KEDC. And by partnering with them, we worked through a workbook called the Teacher Clarity Playbook. And that playbook was written by John Hattie, who Ms. Barnett had spoken about earlier. But the book, it consists of nine modules that are designed to help educators go through the process of sequencing learning progressions, elaborating on the learning intentions, and then crafting the success criteria that we've been speaking of as well. As we mentioned earlier, John Hattie, he is an education researcher. He actually has developed an effect size that he synthesizes various influences in different meta-analyses according to their effect size in the classroom. A typical growth in the classroom for a year would be point four, and teacher clarity actually yields point eight four. So you're getting a little bit over two grade levels in one year if teachers are doing this effectively.
So my name is John Gibson. I'm a career technical educator at Bath County High School. And I'm going to talk to you about how we implemented this. And we use PLC meetings. So PLC is basically professional learning cohorts or communities. So it's teachers and this clarity team came together once a month, sometimes twice a month. And we would sit down and we'd take one of their standards and we'd break that standard apart into nouns and verbs. And then we would kind of move that into how do you teach this? And then formulate a learning progression and then ending up with how do you do this? How do you say it's effective? And that's the success criteria. So we would document this on a standardized form. And then at the end of our meetings, we would take those digital copies and put them in a shared district folder. So this is the same process we use through all four schools, and we've been doing it through the whole academic year. So that's PLC meetings. Thank you. Oh, that's just, now this one's just pictures. That's the form in the middle that we use, the standardized form that we use to document the standards and how we broke them apart and just some nice little pictures like some OES and CES. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tanya Hunt Gibson. I had a lot of your children. I taught at the middle school for 17 years. This year I've got several new roles. What you see here is pictures of different classrooms. When I started teaching 18 years ago, we had to put an ICANN statement on the board and it was your standard, whatever standard you were teaching. And it was just jumping through a hoop. That's why we put it up there. But now with teacher clarity, those kids know exactly what they need to do to be successful. It breaks everything down, starting by what you need to know before you get there. And it makes everything easier for the kids. So maybe they can't do that whole standard. But what the teachers do, some of them will give them a handout, some of them put it on the board. You'll see elementary, a middle, and a high school. And it gets a little harder for each school that you go up. And then that way a kid says, oh, maybe I can't do that whole standard, but I can do parts of that standard. And that's what the success criteria does. And it increases student learning so much when the student knows, hey, this is what I'm supposed to learn. These are the things that I need to do to get there.
And last but not least, there are some next steps that we have for our teacher clarity initiative. For the upcoming school year, we have about five days built into the calendar before students come that we'll use as teacher workdays in professional development. Ms. Klein's kind of set aside a day or a day and a half for the schools across the district to work together horizontally and vertically to align the curriculum and make sure that we're going through the different teacher clarity methods and making sure that they're all aligned together. And then in July, there's two veteran teachers, one being myself, and my teaching partner, Ms. Rushing from Crossroads. my teaching partner, Ms. Rushing from Crossroads. We are going to be going to the Visible Learning Conference in San Diego where John Hattie will actually be presenting as one of the keynote speakers. And while we're there, she and I, we are signed up for different breakout sessions so that we can bring as much back to the county as we possibly can. And we'll be going there in July. That was all partnered through a grant through KEDC. So we're really blessed to be able to go and do that and then come back and mentor other teachers in the district. And I'll end with saying that we're very blessed here in Bath County to be able to incorporate this in our classrooms and with our students. And we've had some wonderful leaders leading us along the way, started two years ago. Ms. Donahue was leading at the time. Ms. Gibson's taken over her spot in that role now. And Ms. Klein, as well, has been helping lead that. So we're very blessed that we're able to hop on board with that and kind of be a trailblazer in our area for implementing teacher clarity in the classroom.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
And I just want to say very quickly, as they go to their seats, there's two things that make an educational system go. Number one, you have to put the right systems in place and the right procedures. And then number two, and most importantly, you have to have high-quality educators in that role. And I'm very happy to tell the parents here tonight that we are blessed here. We have those people. So we're doing great things in this county, and it's because the ladies and gentlemen you've seen here and the other ones that you do not see here, they're working very hard every day for your kids. So I appreciate it.
Item five, Student Spotlight, Crossroads and Owingsville Elementary Schools.
Hi, guys. We're super excited to get to share our night tonight with the teacher clarity team. So you've got to see a lot of the things that the students are doing in K through twelve to get ready to go into the workforce, to progress through their grade levels. But we also get to show you a little bit from the families and from our teachers who prep those students to be ready for learning. So we're going to show you a few things from our preschool today. So we have four preschool full-time classrooms across the district, which is a huge jump from years past. Whenever I first started teaching, we had one half-day room. So we are now offering four full-day preschool rooms, along with a room for our students who are in our paid daycare program, which operates off a lot of the same principles. So we're hitting a lot of our students and really getting them into that social emotional learning, being prepared to be in a classroom setting. At this time, we have, both of these are housed within our elementary schools. Some districts have independent programs. Our students actually get to be in our buildings, so they're getting to build those relationships early on. They're learning teachers, they're learning community within those school settings. We think that's a great thing because we can also provide that continuity for PBIS. So the same PBIS programs we're using with our K through five Kins also apply to our students who are in our pre-K setting. We have lots of great field trips. They just went this week on a couple of those. Some fun hands-on learning experiences every single day. Whenever you walk down, they have race chicks, they have ongoing science experiments within their classroom. So they're really getting a chance to build that curiosity early on. We also have all of our teachers trained in the pyramid model. They've been working with the RDC for the last couple of years out of Ashland. Ms. Carol Lee's become a regular face within our building, and she's a great system of support. And all of this, we've been able to, in large part, fund through some KDE competitive grants. So if you do have some questions about the funding, Ms. Witt and Ms. Combs can let you know a little bit more. But a lot of this, we've been able to cover through some outside sources. So we've not had to pay nearly as much as what it's yielding back to us. So a couple of data points, all of our indicators that they have to look through, and there's about forty-three, are currently between eighty-five and ninety-five percent completely met. There are no indicators that are not met. Everything is either fully or partially met at this time. So they've worked really hard over the last two years to get that accomplished. And we're currently at eighty-nine percent fidelity with their T-POT, which is their teacher evaluation system. It's pretty intensive. They spend about two hours in the classroom and do a full interview. Eighty percent is considered full fidelity, so they're well above that benchmark. Ms. Carol Lee has raved about them in every DIP meeting that we've had. So they have done really excellent things in their classroom. Within the last year, they've grown about twenty percent in that teacher evaluation system. So the work is very present that they've been doing with her. Within our staff, we also see that about eighty percent of our staff has said that they see a significant difference in our students when they are able to attend those preschool settings, that they are coming ready and able to be in a classroom environment and really take off and soar with their learning. When you look at our kindergarten I-ready data, we have no students at kindergarten in our school that are in the tier three setting, so nobody below that twentieth percentile mark. We have ninety-three percent in tier one for reading, eighty-nine percent for math, seven percent in reading for tier two, and eleven percent in math. So we are really reaping those benefits. Behavior incense our way down. And our preschool and our kindergarten classrooms have really became a place that other teachers love to visit. So as we have woven in teacher classroom visits and colleague visits along the way over the year, a lot of people have started requesting to go down and visit some of our younger classrooms. So all of those things kind of wrap back around to say that when we're trying to get into that recovery mode post-COVID, this has been one of our highest yield strategies that we've had. And so we wanted to have some time today to let you meet some of these wonderful families, their students. And we've got about a five-minute video to share with you that goes over some of the things that you'll get to see from their daily classroom, to some of their field trips, to their parent nights. So Dr. Bailey, is there anything that you'd like to add?
I think Ms. Little nailed it. I know last month, OES had their spotlight, and we're so blessed that Crossroads let us jump in with their spotlight because our preschool program is absolutely phenomenal. And she's, these numbers she's sharing with you, I think the biggest indicator is that our kindergarten readiness scores coming into this year are the highest they've ever been. Ms. Witt, am I correct when I say that? That's right. That means these babies coming from preschool, head start in the kindergarten, they're at a higher level than they've ever been in our district, which speaks volumes to our preschool program. And we've got our preschool teachers here, and I know we're going to give them a hand, but I'm going to give them a hand right now. Ms. Little shared a lot with you, and she has this video. I'll let her go ahead and introduce.
All right, guys. So we've got about a five-minute video to show for you. And then when we get finished, we'll call our preschool teachers and our families down where they can get a photo of their child. And then we'll send our certificates back to school so the teachers can get photos of all of them and get them together as a class picture. So we'll get ready to watch our video. Come down, we'll get a photo of everybody.
Parents, we want to thank you all for coming out. Love the kids. Beautiful thing. It is seven-twenty-ish. I'm sure it's past their bedtime, as it's past my bedtime. So you're more than welcome to stay, but this is usually the time you can sneak out the door. So we love your kids, and we're so glad you came. And you all have a great evening.
Item six, Superintendent and Board Communications.
Thank you, Ms. Razor. First of all, I'd like to say to this board, thank you for your financial support of our girls' high school softball team, for help supporting them this weekend. And I want to say along in that line, congratulations to our high school softball team for taking third place in the IIA state championship. Tonight, I want to talk about something I have been continuing to talk about. Yes, threw me off. Somebody's clapping. Watch them. This week in the paper, Mr. Lawson wrote an article detailing how our county received over forty million dollars for local projects and roads, including over two million for little league baseball fields and eighteen million to complete a water treatment plant. Without this money, our roads would be in disrepair, opportunities for our youth would suffer, and Bath Countyans would have a quality water decrease. The point of emphasis here is none of this would be possible without the monetary assistance of our state government. If the cost rested solely on our local government, there'd be one of two direct outcomes. First, nothing would get done due to the lack of funds. Maybe a road would be repaired every once in a while, but nothing of major consequence would happen. The county would fall into disrepair. Second, in order to pay for the needed improvements, your local taxes would be astronomical. It would be impossible to live in Bath County due to the high tax rates. The local government, like Bath County Schools, cannot do it alone. The state gave us seven million dollars to repair our middle school. However, the projected cost is twenty-five to thirty-five million. But the state has further promised that if we pass the nickel in November, they will provide the district with an additional six hundred and thousand nine dollars a year for the next twenty years. This amount has been increased from the previously reported four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. This funding will allow us the bonding potential to rebuild our middle school. Without it, we can only conduct Band-Aid repairs until the building fails. Bath Countyans are already paying the majority of the nickel via the four percent default rate. This means approximately half of all taxpayers paying the majority of, this means that half of all the taxpayers only need to pay thirty-nine additional dollars for our district to receive the six hundred and nine thousand a year for the next twenty years. Our county cannot operate without state assistance, and our middle school cannot survive without it. In November, please vote yes for the nickel to ensure we have a Bath County middle school serving our kids for the next eighty years. Thank you. This concludes superintendent report.
Item seven, Discussion and Possible Action on Approving the Following Items A through X.
I make a motion to approve seven, consent items seven, A through X.
I'll second it. I have a motion by John, a second by Carla. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any public comments?
There were no public comments.
Item nine, Golf Presentation, Mr. James Moore.
How y'all doing? Good evening, board, my name is James Moore, I'm here to discuss restarting the golf program at the high school. I have twenty boys and twelve girls that have showed interest in upcoming season, and we really need to have two coaches for, one for boys and one for girls. I'd be willing to take any questions, I've got tons of info on it.
What's the need for, you can't have one coach coach both of them?
No ma'am, it's not a coed.
Okay.
How many are on a golf team?
There can be up to twenty, twenty boys, twenty girls.
Okay, and how many, there's like, I'm asking out of ignorance because I'm, that's not an area that I'm familiar with. I can tell you about football, baseball, basketball.
Right.
But is it, is there not like, where they have a team of five and then have individuals or? Can you explain a golf team to me a little bit?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Preferably we'll have eight players, four scorecards count towards the total team score, the other four mostly just practice rounds. So, you can have more players, but the fewer players, better.
I have a question. If, if we were able to do this, have you talked with any facilities on their use of their facilities and what it would cost?
Yes ma'am, I talked to Justin Brown at Eagle Trace, and it's five hundred per a team of ten students. So if you had ten boys, ten girls, it'd be five hundred for boys, five hundred for girls.
That's for the whole year?
That's for the year starting July fifteenth when the season starts to the end of the year, September.
Would they get any practice, would you be able to go up there and practice, would that be extra?
No, that's everything, it's two to three practice days on the range, and then Monday through Thursday, they can walk nine holes once a day.
Okay.
Is that on their own or with the coach?
It's on their own or with the coach.
These are things that you probably have not been involved in because as the coach and it's things that I don't know the edge to, but there are Title IX things that we have to go through surveys and things like that, so when this was brought up last year, I asked that they look into it, so I'm not trying to throw everybody under the bus. I don't know at this point if we have, we've done everything we can or are required to do by KHSA because there's three prongs you have to meet. If you don't meet all three, then you're out of compliance. And so, one of the things the board needs to consider, we have a golf coach, boys, girls, head coach, one, on the pay scale. So that's not an issue to hire a coach. The only issue on the high school athletics side is to make sure that we are in compliance and that we can do that. And I don't, I don't see Ms. McNabb, don't want to put her on the spot, and I don't see Ms. Brandenburg, but I see Mr. Griffith, and I don't want to put him on the spot. But those are just things, if we meet all the requirements to have a team, of course, the board makes decisions. I mean, but I support any time and get kids the opportunity. But so along those lines, that just needs to be confirmed or followed through on, that's not your responsibility, that'll be ours.
Right.
And then on the two coaches, again, that would be an alteration to the.
To the boys last, girl.
Yes, and I guess the other question I'll ask, and I'll be quiet, is I used to play a little golf and I was not good at it, but golf clubs are not inexpensive, is that the, the player's responsibility to get clubs or?
All clubs, bags, balls, et cetera, all player responsibility.
Okay, which makes sense, I understand.
Right, right.
Mr. Moore, you mentioned the number of girls and boys, are those high school students only or does it go down to middle school level?
Those are just the high school students, starting this next school year, freshmen through seniors, they'll be seniors next year.
Thank you.
What is the, what's the months that you play, like is it September through?
Season starts July, this year it's July fifteenth, and then I think the state championship is September twenty-third through October second.
So are you telling me that they play during the summer?
Yes ma'am.
They don't, so they don't play while school is in session?
They'll play a little.
I mean, they used to, I know, because my son was on the golf team and they played during the school year, that's what I was asking.
No, the new seasons are July fifteenth through October second would be the last day.
So they would have to provide their own transportation and everything?
Yes ma'am.
The golf team will be in the same boat as softball and baseball where they have to go to the park. And so, I do know on the transportation side, Mr. Detwiler could tell you, we can't get a bus until five-thirty. But you know, depending on the size of your team, you know, there's other ways to get on there. And I think right now, if I'm, I don't want to talk out of turn, but probably most of our high school kids hitch a ride down to the baseball or softball field, is that correct?
I can only tell you what Montgomery County does, transportation's all on the participant, so they don't provide any transportation at all.
It's probably similar to our vast teams.
It would be hard during the summer to provide transportation, wouldn't it?
Yes, getting ahead of ourselves, the HB, House Bill four-seventy-seven, I think, has changed the law now that you can have up to nine passenger vans to transport kids, but we're gonna have to go slow on that because, but in the very near future, we could possibly have, you know, a couple of vans that could carry, you know, two vans could carry your golf teams and you don't need a CDL to drive it, but of course there'd be safety regulations and you'd have to be checked out as a driver. But it will make transporting smaller teams easier, it'll make transporting like the pole vaulters to track meets easier. But that's, that's down the road. Probably won't be able to buy a van, non-passenger van for the next year and a half after all the schools buy them up, so. But I don't have any other questions.
But did you just say that they normally get their own transportation for the team? Okay.
I think transportation would be great, but I think in the future.
Right.
Just like get a couple of coaches, hire first would be great.
Right.
Go from there.
And is Eagle Trace the one that's over in Salt Lake?
No ma'am, it's right off five ninety, or eight oh one.
Okay.
Right in more, it's MSU's golf course.
Okay. Any other questions? So who, who do we need to reach out to to find out through KHSA about the three prongs? As you said, we need to make sure they're set up.
Our current athletic director's Ms. McNabb, so that, I believe that would fall on her responsibility. In the past, it was done at the high school level, but that's where Mr. Anderson was our athletic director at the time. And I know Ms. Klein had also spent a lot of time working on it as when she was the assistant principal at high school. So we'll, we can get those things together. Like you, like I said, you already have a coach on the salary schedule, even if you created a second one, if it didn't meet the tier, then it would just be, we can't have a team. But it won't hurt the salary schedule because it goes in field.
Okay.
And so Ms. Brandenburg is the one that would hire that position as the high school principal. And so we'd have her, you know, hold until we're a hundred percent sure on that sense.
So do you think, how long do you think it would take for us to get the answers for that?
I'm gonna look at Ms. Klein's if she would know, since she did it.
I have a nine important to do and to do any day now, so we have to submit that. As long as that third test is met, which has to do with this adding a team, then it will be okay. But we have to make sure that it's been done properly because you have to base it on previous years despite the nine. And the surveys that students have to take every two years. There's a step process that you have to take in order to make sure you're compliant. As cool, our size is never gonna be test one or two. So that third test is critical, we have to meet it in order to be compliant. And we'll find out any, any day now.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure we can find out in a timely manner and get back to you on it or get back with Ms. Brandenburg so she knows.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Item ten, construction building updates. He don't have to go through that again, does he, if he wants to?
I'm just here in case you have questions from the working session, if not, then I'll leave it to y'all.
Everybody good? I think we're good, Jonathan.
Okay, thank y'all.
Deal.
David, thank you.
But we'll be seeing you very shortly.
Item eleven, discussion and possible action on the consideration of or approval of the special inspections invoice from L.E. Gregg to inspect structural steel framing. Did, do we have a cost on that?
Yes, it's three hundred and ninety dollars, I've got it right here. It's a very, it's three hundred something, it's very small, hold on. What number is that?
Eleven.
Thank you. Three hundred and thirty-nine dollars requested for services performed.
I'll make a motion to approve this special inspections invoice.
I second.
I have a motion, the motion by Brenda, second by John, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and possible action to create an additional district-wide SLP position. It's the speech.
This is where we're contracting with two, and for cost savings, we're asking to create our own position.
I have a motion by Eric, second by Carla, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I voted no.
I'm sorry, I did not hear you, John.
That's okay, sorry.
Item thirteen, discussion and possible action to vote to maintain established board district boundaries.
I'll make the motion to maintain established board district boundaries.
I second. Have a motion by Brenda, second by Barbara, any discussion on this? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Item fourteen, discussion and possible action to approve grant writer, student services liaison position and job description.
Again, this was the position that would be created out of grant funds, would be at no cost to the district. And so this person would write grants for the district, maintain those grants, make sure they're kept, and also provide other services as needed for the, for the district.
I'll make that motion to approve the grant writer, student services liaison position and job description.
Second.
I have a motion by Carla, second by Eric, any discussion?
I would like to know is there going to be a set salary or hourly rate or something? Or is it just dependent upon the funds?
There, sorry. There is a set salary, I'd have to look at the scale to see what that's based on. I can defer, see if you, off the top of your head, if you could help us out? On the classified rank schedule, yes.
Isn't a portion of it though coming out of what, the three to seven percent of it comes out of their, like the grades that they give?
Well, we, we have certain, yes, it'll be fun, like we already have migrant grant, we already have title funds, and so the majority of it's already, it'll be, there won't be a cost in general fund, we'll be able to pull it. And as they write more grants and come in, in essence, that fund will fund itself and greater. And so then we can take less of the migrant, put that more in a different area as the grants, the money changes, we can adjust the money to pay it, still paying out of grants by different money funds and use those other grants in, in other ways.
All in favor signify by saying yes. 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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, discussion and possible action to approve the FY twenty-five salary schedules.
I make a motion to approve the five percent increase for all classified and certified employees as enclosed as option number one.
I do not have a second on that motion, so that motion is dead.
I'll make a motion to approve the physical year twenty-five salary schedules, option three, with an additional one thousand extra service stipend for teachers due to additional duties related to learning loss, with the following changes for the doctorate stipend for two thousand and the high school head AD for six thousand and the high school assistant AD at four thousand, with the middle school head AD at four thousand and the middle school assistant AD at three thousand.
Second.
I have a motion by Carla, second by Eric, any discussion?
Yeah, I have some discussion. The, the five percent step, you know, if you go into the five percent increase, if you go in and look at it, our average, if you go on KDE's website, our average teacher right now and a tenure teacher of Bath County makes fifty thousand dollars per year. If we do the five percent increase, that's gonna give that teacher, tenure teacher, a twenty-five hundred dollar raise. I couldn't understand what all was said right there, so I don't know how much the increase is gonna be. But basically, they're gonna get twenty-six paid periods and they're gonna get an increase of ninety-six dollars per paid period. And when you look at that, ninety-six dollars per paid period, and take taxes out of it, they're basically gonna get about seventy-two dollars per paid period. And if you look at a teacher working eighty hours every two weeks, and I don't know a teacher that works eighty hours, I've never seen a teacher that works eighty hours, they work every two weeks, they probably work a hundred and twenty. But you're basically looking at, you know, basically giving them a ninety cent, ninety cent raise after taxes. It's not much.
Maybe, maybe you didn't hear, and she also included a thousand, a thousand dollar stipend.
It's a one-time, one-time thing, right?
Well, we can keep that stipend every year.
Every year.
And by doing a thousand, if you make fifty thousand dollars as a teacher, that's a two percent raise for teachers in this district. So that would be a two percent raise plus the step-up plus another two percent, which equals five.
But the, the step-up or the thousand dollars, I mean, that's a one-time thing, you're not guaranteeing that to them.
We're not planning on taking it away.
The five percent is for the rest of their career, they're gonna grow off of it every year, they're gonna make more money. We have the money available.
And we're gonna keep it.
We're gonna do what?
We're gonna keep it.
We're gonna keep it or we're not gonna give it to the teachers, we're not gonna pay them?
No, we're, we're gonna give it to the teachers.
Okay. Okay, they'll just have to look at their checks and figure it out, I guess.
Well, I, I think if that thousand dollars is gonna remain in place, that needs to be part of the motion. If the thousand.
I can't hear you, Brenda.
If the thousand dollars is going to remain in place, that needs to be part of the motion. Because the way you stated, it's like we're doing it this one time. Because the way you stated, it's like we're doing it this one time this one year.
That's correct. We have to, we have to place it that way so we can use some extra money that we have left.
But, but a future board can take that stipend away.
The who can take it away?
A future board.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
A, a stipend is, it's not guaranteed. If we increase their pay, it's forever. It's for the rest of their career. If we give them a stipend, it could be this year, it could be two or three years, and then another board comes in and says, nope, I want it gone, takes it away, and we're taking money out of their pocket, money that they've been, you know, counting on. And, and one of the things that frustrates me is, the last two years, we have asked the teachers to be patient and take a two percent increase while we worked on classified pay rates, trying to get them from very, very low pay rates up to something that we could afford. Last year, I think Mr. Evans said last year that, uh, we gave a, uh, anywhere from a one percent to a nine percent pay increase to classifieds, depending on what the rate of pay was, uh, because some, some rates were just ridiculous low. And we did that, but we couldn't get the teachers enough that year. And in my opinion, and it's just my opinion, uh, I think it's time to pay the teachers. It's sustainable. We have the money to do it. This is something that can benefit them for the rest of their careers because it's going to, it's going to continue and stay with them for the rest of their careers. I'm not going to vote for this because I don't think, first off, I don't think it's going to stick around. Second of all, I don't think we're putting enough money in our teachers' pockets, uh, especially since they have taken the two percent for the last two years, waiting on us to have enough money. We've got the money. We can do it. It's up to us to do it.
It's not you, Ms. Bowlin, but the speakers here, down there was a little difficult to, to hear. So you said option three, which is the two percent.
I said option three.
Which is two percent.
I made that motion.
And then you said...
Oh, I made the motion to approve the physical year twenty-five salary schedules, option three, with an additional one thousand extra service stipend for teachers due to additional duties related to learning loss with the following changes.
Two percent plus a thousand.
And then they're staying.
With doc, the doctorate stipend for two thousand and changes to the high school head A.D. to six thousand, high school assistant A.D. four thousand, the middle school head A.D. four thousand, and the middle school assistant A.D. at three thousand.
And were those, sorry. Were those increases or decreases for the, the principals?
Well, on the, um, hi, are you asking about the high school head coach? The high school, we bumped up to six.
No, I thought you said something about the principals.
No. I didn't say anything.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize. Yes, on the, on the athletic directors, yes. I, I'm sorry, I thought you said, I thought you said assist, you said assistant A.D., I thought you said assistant A.P. My apologies.
Oh, okay.
Was that all of it? Was that the entire motion?
I've made the motion, he seconded.
I know, but I'm, I don't think I have all your different pieces. I was trying to write.
Oh, okay, you want me to repeat the...
Yes, please.
Here, I'm going to repeat the whole thing.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you say something about classifieds too?
That's approved in the motion. Motion to approve the physical year twenty-five salary schedules, which is option three. Option three says it's a two percent for certified plus one dollar an hour for classified with a step and an additional one thousand extra service stipend for teachers due to additional duties related to learning loss with the following changes. One is the doctorate stipend. Two is the high school head A.D. six thousand and the high school assistant A.D. for four thousand, with the middle school head A.D. for four thousand and the middle school assistant A.D. at three thousand.
Any further discussion? All signify by saying, uh, all, all approved signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Item sixteen, motion to go into executive session pursuant to KRS sixty-one point eight ten at seventy, seven fifty-five P.M.
Motion.
For litigation.
We make the motion.
I'm...
Eric, you did the second.
I did. At seven fifty-five P.M. Litigation. All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. Opposed?
That's the reason I said this is too im- This is too impersonal. I liked it better when we were at the annex and-
Did you hear what I said?
Yes. Motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying yes.
Hold on.
Yes.
We're gonna, we're gonna just do another motion.
Oh, okay.
And any necessary action? We've got a motion.
Just crank us up, Brad. Every speaker.
Okay, y'all listen to this. Make sure it's right, please. I make a motion to come out of exec- I wish you already did that. So I make a motion to approve Pax Walker the ability to provide pricing for increasing the size of the drainage pond near the football field under lay- the layback project.
I'll second. Have a motion by John, second by Barbara, all in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn at 8:46 PM.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Adjourn.
Thank you all. Thanks for staying.
To approve.